Okay, I'm gonna get this meeting started. Welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting. We'll begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. And I'm going to have the city clerk announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Bethany Baptist Pastor Josh Matlock, and he is also the Police Department Chaplain. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Lopez.
All right, please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, this week we're reminded to give you thanks. And, Lord, we know that there are so many that are just less fortunate than us. And so, there's always someone else who has it worse. But in everything, God, we know your Scripture teaches us that we should give thanks in all circumstances, to offer our prayers with thanksgiving. For you inhabit the praises of your people, and we're called, we're told that you enter, or that we enter your gates with thanksgiving. And so, we give you thanks because you're good. So tonight, we give you thanks, God, for this city, for the community we're a part of, for the volunteers in this city that make this city special, for our elected officials who are here, for our administration, for all of our first responders, police, fire, and others, and their families also who sacrificed so much for us, for the breath in our lungs, for the opportunity each day to live out our purpose and to make a difference in this world. We have so much, Lord, to be thankful for. So, Lord, we pray this week that we would be reminded and do the hard work of giving thanks even in difficult and trying circumstances, Lord. Bless this night and this meeting, we pray. Amen.
Please join me as we recite the pledge of our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get to start with the roll call.
Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Tim Johnson.
I'm here.
And Mayor Dutre.
Present. So, we don't have any presentations today, so we'll go down to public comment. This is an opportunity, members of the public, that wish to address City Council on any item that's not on the agenda, or any of the business items that is on the agenda. You will have five minutes. If you wish to speak, you can fill out a speaking card in the, here in the council chambers, and give that to staff. You can also, if you're on Zoom, you can also raise your hand to request to speak. And if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine to request to speak. So, I'm going to ask the city clerk if she has any speakers today.
I don't have any speaker cards. I did see Carolyn raise her hand earlier. I don't know if you want me to see if she needs to say something?
If you want to see Carolyn, I know she's on the agenda today, so.
There she is.
Okay, Carolyn, you, you're, they believe you want to speak?
Yes, thank you very much. I know I am on the agenda, but my main reason is because, first of all, there is nothing to report as far as the vector control. Montclair is doing great. Secondly, I wanted to say good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council and staff. I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving with family and friends. Please be safe and happy this holiday. I will hope to see you at the Christmas tree lighting. So, everyone be safe out there, okay?
No problem, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, so now, we have any of those public speakers? I'm sorry. Doesn't appear?
No more, no more cards.
All right, that's Carolyn's hand that wishes to speak. So, now, we will go towards a consent calendar. I'll start on my left. Any members who wish to pull a member, a staff item?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few items this evening.
Go ahead.
B like boy 10.
B 10, okay.
C like Charles 2.
C 2.
C like Charles 3.
C 3, okay. All right. How about my right? Anybody want to pull an item on my right?
Mr. Rue?
Or any other items, be pulled on my right, I should say.
Mr. Mayor, I would also piggyback with my colleague on B 10 and C 3.
Okay, yeah, that's been already been pulled, so. Okay, so then, we will start with item, looks like it's B 10. And who wants to lead off on B 10?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Want to go ahead? Go ahead.
I have a question about the alleyway project. I know what's on our agenda packet is just for us to get bids for contractors. But my question is, once we have a contractor established that's going to do the work, then how long do we anticipate it will take for them to complete the work? That's my first question. And the second question is, which, how many of these alleyways have people who drive through the alleyways because their garage faces the alleyway? And so, if that's the case, for those people who have garages that face the alleyway and they sometimes park back there, or drive back there to get to their garage, are we going to close the alleyway? Can we keep up half of it and leave the other half so they can still drive through there? Or how will residents be impacted by this alleyway improvement? And how long do we anticipate it will take?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretend, City Council, and staff. I, so the duration of the project, it will be, it will vary between two to three months. It will take a lot of coordination effort. As you mentioned, there are some garages that face the alleyway, and so, not sure if we can, once the gutter in the middle is constructed, if we could do one half and then the other half. But that's a means and methods of the contractor, you know, how he bids the project. But, yeah, it's, you know, we're also coordinating with the trash, with sweepers, with sweeping, school schedules, and then just every resident, because on the back of the alleyways, there are also, there could be areas where the residents may want their areas paved or repaved. So, we're only paving to the right of way. So, that also will take some coordination with each resident to see if they want to take advantage of the unit prices we'll get from the contractor.
Last question. If, if the entire alleyway is impacted, and they have to, particularly if the process is going to take more than a day or two, if they have to park on the street because they can't use the alleyway, are, can we suspend during the time for their street sweeping that they can park on the street without getting ticketed because they have no place else to park?
Yeah.
So, we coordinate that, we coordinate that with the Police Department to make certain that citations are not issued during that time. I think Councilmember Lopez went through this experience just last year, and he can tell you that the city cooperated with the residents along the alleyway. As far as construction, the alleyways are narrow, and it's going to be very difficult to close one side and allow traffic on the other side, because the vehicles are simply going to have to traverse both sides of the roadway on either side of the cement conduit that will run down the center. So, the alley will simply have to be closed during the construction. But each alleyway will be done one at a time, and they will get through each alleyway relatively quickly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, who's next?
Kind of, kind of the same sentiments that my colleague just echoed. I, and the city manager alluded to, in January of this year, they did repave the alley in which I live. I actually missed out on all the fun of having to not park on the street and have all the Plan B steps that I needed to take to avoid all that, because I happened to have the hospital stay in my surgery at the time. So, I was in the hospital from January 17th to the first week of February, and that was the whole duration of that alley being repaved from beginning to end. So, I missed all of it. But, that said, yes, thank you, city manager, thank you, staff. Trash was delayed, parking citations were not implemented or given, and it, residents were accommodated. I am pleased to see that we have more alleys that are going to be taken care of and fixed. I know that some of the alleys in question, residents that reside near some of these alleys on the map, have been inquiring as to when their alley was next. So, thank you that some of them have been addressed. I just want assurances again, and I think it's already been answered, but just so the public knows, in case they watch this tonight, or they watch it at a subsequent time, those residents that will be, that will be impacted by the repaving of these alleys, you will have a grace period with respect to your parking and street sweeping days. Trash will be accommodated. If you're in the back, you have to move it to the front and vice versa. But thank you, staff, for your due diligence on this. Monica, thank you as well. And I'm anxious to get this accomplished. But I have a question in relation to Ms. Johnson's question, when she asked how long this would take. You mentioned two to three months. Now, are we talking two to three months for the duration of these 16 alleys? Okay, perfect, perfect. Because it only lasted about two and a half, three weeks for our alley, which was great. And as you recall, I was a little bit uneasy, and I actually voted no on the item last time, because the folks on Harvard Street, I believe, north of us, two, three years before, theirs took about two and a half months just for their alley alone. And that's what my concern was. But that didn't happen this last time, so that's great. Thank you.
Okay, we have Councilmember Rue, yes?
My question's pretty much been answered. It was the same thing about street sweeping and refuse collection, because some of the alleys are very narrow. I know one off just west of Rose, north of Palaverty, south of San Jose, it's really difficult in there, because it's a mix of commercial and residential in that alley. So, if they can't use the alley, they have to use the street, and there's difficult street sweeping times. So, as long as this is accommodated, we'll be good. I know there's some anxiety about it, but we'll get through it. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Now, I just want to compliment staff. I think one of the alleys that's being done is Centro Ambonito, in the area there. And I remember when I was in high school, and I had friends whose parents lived there, and I remember the father talking about the alley he's working on. You know, this is going back to the, to the early eighties, so I don't think that alley was ever worked on, so. But I know some of the alleys that I've been focusing on that really needs attention, they're on this list here, so that's great. It's also great that I think we have 38 alleys in the city. We already have 10 done. If we get this 16 done, then that means we were addressed every alley except 12 in the city. So, 26 out of 38 will be addressed. Hopefully, the bids come in at the $2 million mark and makes life a little easier. I think there's another item, the bids came much higher. So, I'm a little worried about, because of cost inflation, the cost of construction, materials, and labor going up, our measure L funds are going to go by a little faster than what we will hope for. So, I will now go on to the next item, which is item C 2. And who wants to lead off? Does that, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, I just have a really quick question about the security staff that are at the trans center. I'm just interested to know how many of them are there at any one given time? Because I think I've seen, well, I don't hang out in the trans center, but I think I've seen like one. But I'm sure there's more than that, right?
No, you would be correct. There's one at a time. But I do want to say that the city staff, the Police Department, is currently in negotiations with Omnitrans to potentially transition to an alternative, and we believe a much superior security program for the trans center. So, we'll be bringing that back to the City Council in the event we are successful with those negotiations.
We'll replace this, I'm sorry. Ed, that will replace this then?
Yes, it would. But in the meantime, we do need to renew this contract, or at least the amendment there to, to address the increase in hourly rate of pay.
Else? No? Okay, then, the next one I have here is C 3.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had some questions about this company, Incremental Movement Consulting, LLC. So, I Googled them, and they don't pop up. They're not internet-based. So, I'm interested to know, like, who this company is. I did, since I couldn't find them anywhere, I did, I noticed the name of the person who has to sign the lease agreement, so I Googled him. And according to YouTube, there is a video where he did a presentation to the Santa Ana City Council, and most of his, most of his discussion was about statistics. So, I did go through the scope of work that's listed in the staff report. But I really want to know, aside from the fact that I wanted to know, like, who this company is, it doesn't show up on the internet, but also, if we agree to bring this part, this consultant firm onboard, what exactly is it that they're going to be doing? Are they, like, just supporting our existing homeless team? Or what exactly are they doing besides policy and statistics?
So, Mr. Fuentes is online if he wants to get involved in the discussion. He has reached out to this individual. But in fact, the gentleman in question actually works for a homeless advisory group in that area that you addressed, and working with the city of Santa Ana. My understanding is that he is an individual who has branched out to develop his own company as a consultant, but he has a very high reputation in Orange County in dealing with homelessness issues in that county. And Mr. Fuentes has had several discussions with the gentleman to determine what kind of services he could bring to the city of Montclair. And based on those discussions, we've determined that, based on that interview versus other interviews with other individuals, this gentleman really seems to understand and know the homelessness issue, the causes and effects, and what types of incremental approaches can be taken to try and address the issue proactively. He is also very experienced in securing grants for agencies that are seeking to address homelessness within their respective communities. The Agenda Report identifies a number of the areas that he will be assisting. On page 30 of your Agenda Packet, you'll see the bullet points that are identified there, as well as within the contract that has been, not the city contract, which provides the city requirements, but his supplemental attached there, too. He outlines all of the different services that he will be providing to the city. They are explained in Exhibit A of the agreement. That is on page 47. They include providing assistance in the gathering of relevant data points for the submission of pro forma to the county of San Bernardino. That's for us to obtain the necessary grant funding for us to develop the programs in our community that we are seeking to develop. We require the funding, and San Bernardino County is the funding source for a lot of the services that we would be seeking to offer. He would be assisting in strategic planning, helping us to lay out a plan and present it to the City Council for how we're going to attack and address homelessness in the community, assist in policy development, program development, creation and establishment of enhanced community engagement initiatives that will allow us to reach out to the homeless community and to engage them, and to determine, help us determine the types of services that they need, as well as to enhance our ability to provide placement services for homeless in the community, also to develop the funding necessary to acquire property or facilities in the city of Montclair that would allow us to provide housing to homeless individuals in the community, assist in capacity building, assist in communication, plan development and execution, organizational change and management, and a number of other services that will allow us to get a homeless program that will further enhance what we are already doing. You've heard me speak on this issue before. In San Bernardino County, Montclair is considered one of the most far-reaching, has one of the most far-reaching programs in this county. In fact, during COVID, when the state required that each county submit a homeless plan that will address how counties are going to deal with homeless during the COVID pandemic, how they're going to house these individuals and take advantage of project key programs, they turned to the city of Montclair. Because we already had an active program, we provided them our plan, and San Bernardino County used that plan to represent it to the state as the county plan going forward. So, we're already in a position where the county looks at us as one of the lead agencies in the county related to homeless programs. This will allow us to expand on that program and to take advantage of a consultant who clearly understands the issues as they are in California, and particularly within our region, and allow us to expand on that program and make it a better one, a more viable program, and one that will deliver services directly to the homeless individuals, and help us address the crisis as it continues to develop in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Starr.
And then, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in addition to what City Manager Starr just noted, I did want to add that Mr. Ken Gomenski served as the Deputy Chief of Police for the city of Santa Ana. And during that period of time, he oversaw the division within the department that dealt with code enforcement, in particular, homeless outreach services. And Mr. Gomenski was the individual who oversaw, if you recall, back in 2018, the city of Santa Ana had several lawsuits brought against them related to their dealings with homeless outreach. And Mr. Gomenski was the one who brought the city of Santa Ana into compliance with federal regulations, developed the necessary plans to implement homeless shelters within the city of Santa Ana, and also worked with other surrounding agencies to address the homeless issues that were particularly affecting Orange County. And in addition to that, Mr. Gomenski was brought back upon retiring from the city of Santa Ana to oversee their homeless outreach division. And as part of choosing Mr. Gomenski, we took into note that he had the various individuals, the contacts with both vendors that provide wraparound services to homeless outreach, as well as he worked with being a bridge between the city of Santa Ana, as well as several individuals who were on the side of protecting homeless rights and all of that. So, he would be instrumental to deriving our efforts to move forward, as City Manager Starr noted, to further develop our program and bring in the potential for a homeless shelter within the city. So, that's the reasons and rationale why we elected to bring him onboard.
So, just to piggyback on Mr. Fuentes's comments, he mentioned that this individual was responsible for bringing Santa Ana out of the issues that it was confronting related to lawsuits against that community. You're familiar with what has occurred in the city of Pomona, and the fact that Pomona has been challenged both legally and in other ways by the homeless community in, and court orders directing and ordering that Pomona specifically address issues related to homelessness in that community, from providing lockers to building homeless shelters. Understanding what occurred in Pomona, take that and expand that significantly, and Santa Ana was more involved and had to deal with a far greater number of issues because of a much larger homeless population. And so, I would say probably, if not in our region, and if not in Southern California, probably in, in all of California, this individual has as much experience as anyone. You just aren't familiar with him, because he worked for agencies, and now he's branched out and is starting his own consulting business.
Okay. How about Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the staff report on page 30, there's a line in the third paragraph in the background section that states the staff is proposing to retain the services. So, that implies that there is a present relationship with this gentleman, correct?
No. Other than in conversation.
Well, it does say in the report, staff is proposing to retain the services of IMC to provide homeless outreach consulting services on an as-needed basis.
Right. Retain means that we are asking to, the council's direction and permission to hire him.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was an existing contract, and this was just a renewal. But I have two, actually, there's three questions. Given the information that was just shared about the gentleman that owns the company, and his long list of relationships that he has with organizations or nonprofits or what have you, stakeholders in Santa Ana and Orange County, what specific organizations in San Bernardino County, and particularly the West End, does the gentleman have here?
Well, that's part of the problem, and that is that San Bernardino County simply has never developed those kinds of relations or those kinds of programs. In fact, I would say that San Bernardino County is in the backwater of developing homeless programs, and that's why Montclair has been a lead agency in this county because of the lack of interest in the part of San Bernardino County officials to go in that direction. In fact, you might have read several months ago in the newspaper that San Bernardino County forfeited almost $5 million to the federal government, because it simply did not have a desire or interest in developing homeless programs. So, there isn't that structure in San Bernardino County. This gentleman, because of his outreach, because of his experience, because of his connections, will bring that into our county, at least to the West End. And I would expect, again, that San Bernardino County would look towards Montclair and perhaps develop a program based on that, because now, San Bernardino County is under some direction from the state and federal government that they need to get involved in homelessness more than they have been, and this would be the beginning of that.
And then, on page 46 of the staff report, which is page one of Exhibit A of the agreement, it alludes to, and I'll quote the line, additionally, consultant shall work with city staff to complete and submit a pro forma to the county of San Bernardino to acquire rehabilitate staff program and transition a 36-unit motel into a homeless shelter. So, what present motel within the city is this alluding to?
We are looking at a motel that's on Mission Boulevard, I believe, and is called the?
Terry O'N?
No, Mikey? Welcome in, welcome in.
That's correct. That it's the Welcome-In located on Mission.
Yes.
We've, we've met with the owner of Welcome-In over the course of the last couple of years. They've indicated the interest in either selling or leasing the property of the city of Montclair for that purpose. And we have, we are working on a grant application with the county for approximately $5.5 million for purposes of acquisition and renovation.
And then, last inquiry regarding page two of two of the agreement, it's concerning the billing. It mentions in the last line of the first arrow that conversations lasting less than 15 minutes shall not be billed, which I'm fine with. However, we're paying the consultant a rate of $150 an hour. At the 16th minute, is the gentleman in question to be given the $150?
No, I believe he would be billing on a quarterly 15-minute basis at that point. This is a deal. You call an attorney and talk to an attorney for one minute, they're going to charge you for 15 minutes.
Sure. Well, I was just going to say, I would like it to stipulate, though, that if, if there was a 1-minute to 30-minute increment, that, of course, the gentleman would be entitled to half those services at a rate of $75, and anything over 30 to the full hour, he's entitled to the full $150. That's, that was just my concern. I was knowing that at the 16th minute, if he was going to get the full $150, I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
I don't know specifically, in my experience with some consultants, they would do more of what you said. You know, half hour at 75, then a full hour at 150. But I don't know what, how this is arranged.
I'm assuming our contracts talk about that, Diane?
Well, I, I think the, the understanding is, it's, okay, $150 an hour, but if you talk for a quarter of that, it would be whatever, $37.50, whatever half of 75 is.
Yeah.
But apparently, this gentleman is saying if it's 15 and under, he's not even going to charge.
Yeah, 15 and under, yeah.
Which is, which is somewhat generous. But if he talks to you or does work for three quarters of an hour, it'd be three quarters of $150. A pro rata approach. A full hour would be 150. Something less would be less.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have.
All right, go ahead, Bill. You're next.
And, we've already discussed part of the contract. I am not familiar with this organization, this individual, and I look forward to getting to know him, because this is an area of concern I've had for a long time. If you look at some other cities, and there are not many examples here in San Bernardino County, but just across the line in LA County, you see how some well-managed homeless programs can really benefit the community and the individuals. I can cite, El Monte has a village for homeless. It almost looks like a little Lego home, and the program is exceedingly successful. Most of the people are from that community. They go in, there's a specific period of time that they're there, and then they're back out in the general population, in either transitional housing, or in job training and things of that sort. The city of Baldwin Park will be embarking on their third homeless shelter. They have a tiny home village for singles, a tiny home village for families, and they're in the process of buying a motel and converting it into homeless. and converting it into homeless housing. That would be a little bit longer term, is my understanding, because sometimes people need longer than others. But in the city of Baldwin Park, the one I'm most familiar with, they actually average about a hundred days in the shelter, and then they're out in transitional housing. In both shelters, they're asked to help be a part of the uh community. Everybody has some things they do to help clean up, do things like that. They have workshops. It's very successful. In fact, one gentleman who's gone through the program is now working. He comes back one day a week and volunteers at the senior center. So I think if this is done right, we can have something that will be very much to our credit. Whatever you wanna think about homelessness, you can have them on the street in front of your home or your business, or you can have people sheltered in dignity and moving forward with their lives because it could be any one of us. And I I I always think, when I talk about homeless or think about it, especially this time of year, it's Saint Matthew who talks about, I was hungry and you fed me. I was the stranger and you took me, and we all know that passage. And it's pretty much germane to just about every faith system there is, and I think this is a good step. I look forward to uh meeting Mr. Dombrowski at some point because I I have some uh concepts I'd like to share with him as well. Also, if anybody wants a lot of information on homelessness, Union Station in Pasadena, it pretty much covers a large area. And Mishki has tremendous statistics she could give you on their success rates as well. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember, uh Mayor Paul Tim Johnson.
Just a quickie, I really want to uh thank um city manager Starr and community development, economic development director, Mr. Fuentes, on um presenting this to us because um we we all know that that houselessness is an issue. And even though the team that we have does outstanding work, this, I think if we approve this, that will be the icing on the cake to take us to the next level. So thank you to both of you for bringing that before us.
Great, thank you very much. I wanna say this, I know we're supposed to have a workshop on the subject. In the meantime, staff's been working on a, trying to develop what a plan, a realistic plan, not just have a workshop and discuss it and not really have a plan. And so I know Ed and Mikey, um who else is here in the audience? I know other staff members are working on this. So this gentleman will be able to come on board if we hire him. This gentleman will be able to assist staff to really make our program much stronger so we can compete for grant funds, uh especially the funds that the county semi-day has. But also at the same time that we can have, hopefully, a a a facility that works properly. And there's a lot of good examples and bad examples out there we've heard about. And so this is part of it, too, is we wanna make sure we have a very functional uh facility here in Montclair. So I will stop there, and I know a later date again, we'll have a workshop on the subject when staff, hopefully by then, has pretty much everything put together and presents it for the city council.
I I wanna say that you were probably thinking of uh Mr. Diaz and his code enforcement team was the other side of my group.
Yes, Mr. Diaz, I forgot Mr. Diaz, yeah, I forgot, yeah. I mentioned Mikey, Mikey Fuentes, okay. All right, I think that's all we have, um so I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as presented and discussed this evening.
I'll second.
Motion by Rue, second by uh Johnson, and then we'll vote. This will be a electronic vote, and it's, the vote is five zero. And I do wanna say this, you know, in the county, I know some cities, Victorville, City Raillands, uh I know Ontario's working on a plan now, city of San Bernardino, either have facilities or run of the way, so there is some movement. I know that Supervisor Hagman and Supervisor Baca have an Anahoc Committee to better focus on funding of homeless programs uh with cooperations of other cities. So uh so so the county semi knows it's taking a much stronger uh strategic uh priority on the subject than they were just a, just a year ago, so I wanna state that. And I also wanna congratulate the, our former council member Raft for another four years. So with that, on the uh four years on the uh, on the mosquito, I'm gonna call it, the vector control board. So we're gonna go down to communications now, and I'll start with the human services department. I think uh recreation manager Fernando Saltoz? Come on up, Fernando. No Marcia today, what happened to Marcia?
Yeah, she's not here today, but uh good evening, everyone.
Oh, okay.
All right, so um I have some festive announcements. First, the Community Activities Commission would like to welcome everyone to attend a holly jolly event that will be held Thursday, November thirtieth, from six PM to eight-thirty at the Montclair Youth Center. Uh the evening will include the tree lighting, complimentary photos, and Santa and Mrs. Claus will be attending. Uh so we're looking forward to that. And then also, we have some refreshments while supplies last, and participants can write letters to Santa. Uh gift lights in memory or in honor of a loved one will also be available for purchase, and we look forward to seeing you there. Um also, the Community Activities Commission would like to invite our residents to submit their entry for the holiday home decoration contest. Uh entry applications are available on the city website and are due Friday, February, I'm sorry, Friday, December first at six PM. Winners will be announced at an upcoming city council meeting, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And then next is uh, I think Jason and uh the dashing through Montclair.
Yes, good eve, good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to announce our, it's that time of year again for uh holiday events uh that the police department is involved with as well. Um we just received some notifications from Santa today finalizing some of this, so I would like to speak about our first event, which is, we'll be dashing through Montclair Saturday, December second, twenty twenty-three, from twelve PM, excuse me, to seven PM. Santa, Mrs. Claus, and their sleigh will be dashing through the streets of Montclair, spreading holiday cheer. This year, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be taking a new route, which will uh include much more area in the south end of the city as well this year. Uh please note, while Santa wants to visit every street in the city, he needs to reserve his energy for Christmas Eve deliveries. Santa changes his route every year to travel as many Montclair streets as possible. Keep an eye out for Santa's sleigh and his route, which will be posted on the city's website, uh which the route will be posted soon. I wanted to include this year, some of the stops that we are, we added a stop or two. Uh we'll be stopping at Lehigh Elementary School, Essex Park, Saratoga Park, City Hall, MacArthur Park. Um we'll also have some police vehicles and some motorcycles out there this year, police motorcycles as well escorting the sleigh and meeting with the community. Um an interesting little tidbit, um the actual route is twenty-six point one-three miles this year, which is the longest route that we've had. Um a marathon's twenty-six point two miles, is really close to that. Uh it's just a little tidbit of information, but that's a lot of miles to travel in a five-square-mile city. And we look forward to this event every year, it really uh humbles you, seeing everybody out there. So please be safe, and we'll see you at that event. The second events, which are two that I'll talk about, are the Montclair Costco toy drives. The fire department and the police department will be partnering with Montclair Costco to hold two Spark of Love toy drives. Department members will be on hand to provide a list of preferred items to purchase at the Costco as shoppers enter the store, uh which will include both food and toys. Any items purchased that uh can be donated to the personnel and will be displayed on the emergency vehicles, which we park out right in front of the Costco. Monetary donations will also be accepted. Um all donations will go towards families in need as part of the city's holiday food and toy basket program held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. The toy drives will be held on December first, which is a Friday, and December eighth, which is also a Friday, from ten AM to two PM. Um so please, if you're at Costco, um we are, we're always enjoy seeing those, the food and toys exit the store, but not exit Montclair. They stay in Montclair and provide it to the families and the children. Um it's a real nice event. If anyone's ever seen it, it actually covers the whole police truck. Sometimes we have to make a trip and come back, so. If there's no questions, it's.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'm not gonna be around for these events, I wanna be in Europe at this time, so don't bring in my house when I'm gone, okay?
For, for, for the dashing event?
I know that Mayor Paul Tim Johnson would do well at the uh, at the holly jolly uh event. And then, of course, uh Santa Claus and everybody else would do well these, these events as well. All right, let's just go to the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple items this evening. First of all, uh we are pulling the closed session item, so that's not gonna go forward tonight.
Okay.
So you guys could get home earlier. Second item is in regard to the Manook Appeal Hearing. I'd sent around um emails to everyone. The dates that everyone could make uh would be January twenty-two and twenty-nine, but we are proposing January twenty-nine as the date, that's the fifth Monday. Uh in the event, there's a planning commission meeting on the twenty-second, we would not have a conflict. So unless I hear something otherwise, that's the date we're gonna go with, January twenty-nine.
All right, Monday, January twenty-nine is the date?
Yes.
Okay.
Six PM?
Thank you, six PM.
Yep, yes.
Sounds good.
Works with me, but works with all of you.
All right, six PM it is.
Another item is in regard to the litigation matter. And just to remind you, we can talk about anything in open session, well, can't make decisions on it. But um we, in the Dow Alvaran, A-L-V-A-R-R-A-N versus Montclair litigation, uh that's where the city has been sued in connection with injuries sustained by people as a result of a vehicle um colliding uh with the um plaintiff's vehicle. Uh we had proposed entering into a tolling agreement with the city of Montclair. I'm s, I'm sorry, we are at Montclair, with the city of Pomona. And I just received word before the meeting tonight that um Pomona also had this on their agenda earlier tonight, that they are declining to enter into a tolling agreement. So um we will be filing a claim against the city of Pomona.
Okay.
Just wanted to make you aware of that. Uh the fourth item this evening is simply to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you have a great one and a safe one.
Okay, I believe the the matter, just the legal matter you just talked about with the city of Pomona is still confidential, and we should not be discussing that with anybody.
Anything in closed session, yes.
All right, so, city manager.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, I just wanna announce, uh so the December four regular city council meeting will be canceled. Any opposition from the council on that item? If not, then it's so ordered.
Reason, Mr. Mayor, just curious.
Excuse me?
The reason, just curious.
Well, I believe that uh there's gonna be a lack of business items, and I also will be not here that day.
Will we have the subsequent meeting two weeks following?
Yeah, there's a meeting on December, uh December eighteenth.
Okay, perfect.
So I just wanted to just recognize uh the uh staff on the uh the veterans event that we had here on November the eighth. Uh the veterans, uh it was a, it was an event held at the senior center in conjunction to our, with our senior uh clients we have for our lunch program. And uh the veterans uh of course, who are seniors uh through the program were recognized on November the eighth. I would like to adjourn this meeting in in memory of two different persons. First of all, uh first, uh former First Lady Rosalyn Carter, who just passed away here recently, as of, as of yesterday. And then I'd also like to adjourn the meeting in memory of, if my mother-in-law, and then also the mother of uh my wife, the First Lady of Montclair, Pat Maloon, uh who passed away uh last uh two weeks ago. And then finally, I just wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I wish your families and your friends and everybody else a great uh, great day. And this is a day that not only we all come together and enjoy each other's time, but also we say thank you for the many things that we have in life. And sometimes we kinda forget what we have in life. We focus on other things that we don't have in life, and then um don't appreciate uh what we do have and how great it is. So let's uh, in honor of Thanksgiving, let's just say thank you for everything we have that's going, going well for us, and for the family and friends that we have. So I'll begin with the council member Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, you, I want to also comment on the passing of former First Lady Rosalyn Carter. She decided early on in the presidency of Jimmy Carter to take up the issue of mental health, to try to bring some sunshine, not to stigmatize it, but to let people know that there's help out there. And she continued that well after the presidency of President Carter. She was a strong advocate for people and families who struggled with mental health to receive the services they needed, and she even spoke in global forums about this. In many parts of the world, mental health is not just stigmatized, it's considered almost something mysterious, ghostly, or something of that sort. And she tried to bring a lot of dignity to those lives, and she'll always be remembered for that. And of course, for her partnership with her husband on Habitat for Humanity, one of the great things to help build homes for low-to-moderate-income families in this country. And, you know, we have a problem with homelessness now. It would have been far worse had we not had Habitat for Humanity, so Godspeed on that. Those issues alone give her a very high rank in my world. On Saturday, I helped at CDC with the food drive. I generally help on the fourth Saturday when I can, it wasn't the fourth time, it wasn't the fourth Saturday because that would have been too close to Thanksgiving. But we normally start at eight and finish at noon. We were done handing out food at ten o'clock in the morning. The cars were Kingsley all the way up Fremont. And it's very gratifying to be able to be a part of something that's helping families right now who are struggling so much. Then yesterday, I helped at the uh turkey giveaway that Assembly Member Rubio did. Uh she did it in coordination with her sister, Senator Rubio, who represents Montclair. It was held at Charter Oak High School. We, the volunteers were there at six AM, getting things ready, and the start time was eight AM. The event concluded about one-thirty. They had exhausted all fifteen hundred turkeys and the boxes of food that went with it. The line of cars was over three miles long. Is, there's a huge need, and we need to see what we can do, each one of us, to help. When we talk about thanks, I'm thankful that I have the ability to go out and help and do some of these things. When I, you think about Thanksgiving, I, you know, I live in a very, very humble home. I'm, I'm not the richest person around. But I have shelter, I have food in my cla, uh my cabinets. I have a car that I can drive. I can most of the time afford gas. I think we all know there are the times we struggle with that, but I'm so blessed that I have all of that. At one of the food drives, a lady said to us, she didn't want the turkey because she didn't have a refrigerator or a freezer. She couldn't have left it out. Another one told us that she didn't have an oven. While we were able to get those individuals gift cards. When you think about not having an oven, she probably has a toaster oven or a microwave, you can't really cook a turkey in that. The need is really there, it's sadly growing because of many, many different things. And whatever we can do to help, we should help. I also wanna mark that the twenty-second Wednesday will be sixty years since the assassination of President Kennedy. In sixty years, the world has changed a lot, but his vision continues. He was a strong champion of civil rights. Certainly, we needed it then, we need it now. He was a champion for small businesses. And of course, the biggest, to me, one of the biggest things, he was a champion for science and getting a man on the moon. NASA changed the way we did things in this country with science. We made people dream again, but we made science very real for an entire generation of young people. And that's very worthy of praise, that's a great legacy to have. Many of the things we have, our computers, our small phones, things of that sort, come directly from that space program. So he did so many good things in this country for so many people. And in closing for Thanksgiving, and I could go into the history of Thanksgiving, why it's on the fourth, not the third or the fifth, there's a long history on that. And yes, in nineteen thirty-nine and forty, we actually had two Thanksgivings, but that's for another day. In the words of President Kennedy in his proclamation of Thanksgiving in nineteen sixty-two, uh three, he said, "Today we give our thanks, most of all, for the ideals of honor and faith we inherit from our forefathers, for the decent" honor and faith we inherit from our forefathers, for the decency of purpose, steadfastness of resolve, and strength of will, for the courage and the humility which they possessed and which we must seek every day to emulate. As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. Let us therefore proclaim our gratitude to providence for manifold blessings. Let us be humbly thankful for our inherited ideals, and let us resolve to share those blessings and those ideals with all our human, with all our fellow human beings throughout the world." And I think that last sentence sums it up. We need to continue to share our blessings and ideals throughout the world with everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question. I was hoping Marcia would be here, but, Mr. City Manager, I know you could address the issue and give an answer. Since the memo that Ms. Richter provided regarding the issue of parks and the status of parks and the issue of baseball teams and, and other teams for that matter, renting parks, I had a fresh request from a resident and a team that caught me off guard, asking about use of Essex Park, the process to go about renting the park. Could you please give an explanation where we stand right now concerning the use of parks, access to rentals? If a rental is not available, they don't have the means to, specifically what city staff is recommending they do? They stated they would try to make the meeting tonight. I know they're not in the audience, perhaps that they're watching. If not, maybe they'll view this on a subsequent day on our YouTube channel. But could you please provide an answer so that way they can at least view that and hear that?
Yes, the city does not have a program related to rental of baseball fields. It is a contract basis where the group that is using parks, baseball fields, for example, little leagues, would contract with the city. The city council approves those contracts. That's the only vehicle that we have in place in relation to the use of those parks, which is why travel teams aren't allowed to use them because we don't have a contractual relationship with travel teams. The Human Services staff is working on a policy that they will be submitting to the city council for consideration after looking at or examining the programs and policies in place in our surrounding cities. I think that a memo that they've recently submitted to the city council outlines how each one of those cities reacts and responds to the use of their parks. For the most part, most of them will only lease or contract with little leagues and don't have a contractual relationship with travel teams. It's very likely that that's, that is how the city will be reflecting a policy recommendation to the city council to effectively continue the policy that we've had in place. And that would be that it would be through a contractual basis through the, between the city council and the leagues that would be submitting for a request for use of those fields. Beyond that, I, I don't have any other recommendations from Human Services as to whether or not they're going to be proposing additional modifications to the way it currently is. But what we don't have right now is a policy that has been codified, and that is what they're working on now, is the codification of that policy for submission to the city council for consideration.
Thank you for your time and your thorough explanation, sir. It's appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Real quickly, on November tenth, I, and I know the mayor was there, we both attended the Montclair High School football team's CIF quarterfinal game against a high school from Santa Monica. I'm forgetting the name of the school, but it was a very exciting game. They, it was close. It went back and forth for a while, but in the end, Montclair High School unfortunately lost the game in a very, very tight game. This is a little bit of a historic circumstance for the team because this will be the second time in two years that the team has gone to CIF play. And the last time it happened was, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, John, they were quoting the eighties or late seventies? I'm not quite sure the exact timeframe.
I don't remember.
But it was a long time. And the fact that we've now made CIF two of the, I guess, two years, they didn't make it last year, it was the year before, so twenty-one, they made it, twenty-two, they did not, and twenty-three, they did. And they're to, to be commended. Despite their loss, there's nothing to be ashamed of. They've accomplished much, so kudos to them and the coaching staff. The subsequent day, November eleventh, which was Veterans Day, I attended Montclair High School Booster Club's first annual car show. And when I arrived, I was severely caught off guard. A parent on the Booster Club told me that as of Friday night, the night before, they only had twenty cars, twenty-six cars registered to participate in the car show. And they thought, well, we'll just take what we got, we'll make the best of it. This is, this is great, it's better than no cars. Well, when they set up the, the check-in table and it came time for them to start checking in cars, by the time they were done, they had two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred cars check in, pay the registration fee on-site, and they filled the parking lot at Montclair High School completely. Those of us that participated have to, had to be on the far end parking lot, closest to the side street. Xavier, the side street right perpendicular to your house? Camulus, thank you. We had to park over there, and all the activities were on the field. It was very widely attended. Kudos to about four major car club groups that helped spread the word, and they were out of the region, some coming from San Gabriel Valley to support Montclair High's Booster Club. Vendors were all full, and many of the vendors, almost all of them had a Montclair connection. If they weren't a small business from here in Montclair, they were running small businesses out of their home, or they were organizations that did business with the city or in some capacity. One was a women's shelter that the city deals with. Despite losing and being eliminated the night before, it was clear the community and the surrounding community came out to support the team and the future program. And for that, I extend my great gratitude. It was heartening to see that they had the, the opposite effect of what they were anticipating. That's about a hundredfold of progress in a matter of less than twelve hours that they weren't expecting, so it was great. And a good time was held by all, it was peaceful, picked up their trash, the parking lot was clean, they left in an orderly manner, it was great. So they do intend to have it next year, and hopefully the side where we parked is full and we have to park on the streets. But anyhow, of course, Thanksgiving is the twenty-third, Thursday, and of course, it is now an American tradition of sorts and part of our culture, maybe to our detriment. That November, the day after Thanksgiving is, of course, Black Friday, and it's an opportunity for you to get some pretty sweet deals and save some money. There's nothing wrong with that. I just think it's a little bit too, too promoted at our own detriment, and perhaps the materialistic end of things is not so admirable, and we forget about the whole intent of the day before, and we go and blow money and invest on materialistic things. But nonetheless, it's our right to do so, that is capitalism, and I'm all for it. But I bring that up because that day, the twenty-fifth, which is a Saturday, is Small Business Saturday. So please make sure that you save a little money on Friday and you spend some money at a small business. And we have hundreds here in the city of Montclair. You don't have to buy an item for a Christmas gift, just frequent a business and give them a little bit of your money. If you're shopping, stop at a place like Mr. Yu's, stop at Los Portales, stop at said casino, stop, you know, get, get a bite within town. Support a cleaner, support, if you need a haircut, get a haircut in town. These are folks that are, many times our own residents as well, trying to make ends meet, and they need a little bit of support and love. So support a small business on Small Business Saturday. And feel free to post it on, on social media and tag the city on it. Let everybody know in the region that we're supporting our own, our own businesses here in town. And lastly, of course, it is Thanksgiving. Councilman Rue and I have a tendency to quote history and cite history, it's, I guess it's just inbred in us. So this whole concept of Thanksgiving, while many will attribute it to the pilgrims leaving England and establishing colonies here in the, what is now the States, the actual formal tradition didn't start until October third of eighteen sixty-three, when President Abraham Lincoln and through an act of Congress officially declared the first annual National Day of Thanksgiving. And here is what he wrote. "No human counsel hath devised, nor hath any mortal hand worked out these great things. They are the gracious gifts of the Most High God, who while dealing with us in anger for our sins, has nevertheless remembered mercy. I do therefore invite my fellow citizens in every part of the United States and those who are so journeying in foreign lands to set apart and observe the last Thursday of November next as a day of Thanksgiving, and praise to our beneficent Father who dwelleth in the heavens. It is announced in the holy scriptures and proven by all history that those nations are blessed whose God is the Lord. It has seemed to me fit and proper that God should be solemnly, reverently, and gratefully acknowledged, as with one heart and one voice, by the whole American people. Signed, President Abraham Lincoln, October third, eighteen sixty-three." May you and your family and yours have a blessed Thanksgiving. Count your blessings despite even our shortcomings, we are, we have much to be grateful for. Thank you for your time.
And by the way, councilmember, on Small Business Saturday, if you use your American Express, a certain.
That's another.
Well, thank you. And I just want to say, Montclair High School Football, they were playing Santa Monica Prep. They were down thirteen-zero, didn't look good the first quarter, but then the team came back, they had a lead, lost the lead in the third quarter, close game, I think they lost by two points. Unfortunately, I had to leave. In regards to the car show, I forgot all about it. Next time, they did advertise early, but then the last three to four days, I didn't, I didn't see anything on social media, so, you know, like Montclair connects, and I didn't see anything there. So next time, make sure it gets on social media, on Facebook. Some of us don't go on Instagram, so. So I'll go with Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of items. Number one, I was honored to participate in the Montclair High School Ready to Launch Initiative. I think I announced it here from this dais when it was coming up, but there were multiple business people there to interview the students. And as it usually happens, I was there looking for stereotypical students. I didn't see any, though. I saw lots of junior executives, but I didn't see many students or any students. I was really impressed by most of them. One of them in particular, her first name is Kayla. Kayla told me about how she started her first business when she was ten. It's like, how, you know, how did you do that? What, what kind of business does a ten-year-old have? I'm thinking lemonade stands. And she said, no, I had a slime business, and I made quite a lot of money with the slime business. And now she has another business that she makes lip balm. I don't know how she does it, but she makes lip balm, and she sells them in little bundles on Etsy. And so I was so impressed by her, I invited her to reach out to me near the, at the end of the school year. I would love to have her at our Country Fair Jamboree as a vendor because we want to promote her business. But I was just really very, very impressed by how well-prepared those students are. Kudos to Principal Cho and his team for doing such a great job with those students. They, you know, I probably, over the course of my career, I've, I've interviewed hundreds of people, and most people that I've had the opportunity to interview were not as prepared as those students were. They, they walked in, they had their, their resume, their cover letter, their applicant, they just were so well prepared, and if I had a job to offer them, I would have done it that day. So I was, it was my honor to be there with them. Kudos to Chief Reed, who was also there with us, and I'm, I suspect your, your experience was about the same as mine. It really was. And we also had, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, but there was someone from the fire department also, who was there interviewing students.
Evenpool?
No, it wasn't, no, it was, no, somebody I hadn't met before.
Italian chief, so.
Yeah. So I think this is, the first time they did this Ready to Launch Initiative was last year, and I think that they're going to continue it every year to make sure that the students of Montclair High School, when they leave high school, whether they're going to college or into the workforce, they're ready to go and they know what to do. There was a woman there who was interviewing students, and she said her son last year participated in this event, the Ready to Launch Initiative, and he said it was because of his practice with the, his, his participation in the Ready to Launch Initiative, he knew how to get the first job he applied for. So kudos to them. Secondly, I want to talk about the Montclair Chamber of Commerce Annual Holiday Party that's in partnership with the city of Montclair for the food and toy drive. It will be on November twenty-ninth at noon, and we're going to have a fantastic barbecue lunch, which is being sponsored by I-Ten Towing. And if you were there last year and you were able to have that barbecue lunch, it's the same guy who's coming back. We're very excited about that. So that'll be November twenty-ninth here at the community center. We are, as part of that event, we are collecting, we will have donation boxes for food, non-perishable foods and, and/or toys. Last year, some people came to the event and did not bring a non-perishable food or a toy, they just came in, sat down, had lunch. So, but that's not really what the event is about. So this year, we've changed it just a bit. In order to get into the event, you must have a non-perishable food item, a toy, and if you don't have either or, we're going to charge you ten bucks, and that money's going to go to the Montclair Community Foundation so that they can buy something that can be used in that distribution. And lastly, I want to talk about an upcoming program that's being developed by Economic Development Director Fuentes and his team, and in, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We are, we were talking about the Black Friday and, you know, shop local, but instead of doing it just right now for the holidays, it actually is going to be an annual event where we will be showcasing businesses all throughout the year, and residents who are non-residents who shop at those stores and who can provide documentation that they shopped at the stores on the chamber membership list will be able to enter a raffle for a gift card. And that gift card will probably be for something to shop at Montclair, or Montclair resident, a Montclair restaurant, or a Montclair retail establishment, so that they can even, so they've already shopped at Montclair, now we're going to give them another opportunity to shop Montclair. And so that'll be, once we get it rolling between Mr. Fuentes and the chamber, once we get that rolling, it'll be an all-year event because we really want our small businesses to thrive, and we're going to do everything that we can to make that happen. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Sorry I missed your event at the high school, had another event to go to, and of course, I won't be at the chamber event as well, since I'll be out of town. All right, Councilmember Martinez is going to finish it off.
Yes, thank you. I don't believe she's still here, but if she is, I wanted to also congratulate Carolyn Raft for another four years of us getting to see her face. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope you have a wonderful time with your families and loved ones. And since we won't be seeing each other inside the chambers until the eighteenth, I look forward to seeing everyone, city employees and residents at all the fun events that are coming up. That's all, thank you.
That's all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mayor, I forgot one minor thing.
You guys like to talk, don't you?
I forgot one.
Everybody likes to talk.
One minor thing.
Go ahead, one more.
I didn't, I did inadvertently forget this. On November fifteenth, it was Police Chief Jason Reed's birthday, so happy birthday, Chief Reed. Fifteen days before mine, by the way, so we're in the same month.
Well, happy birthday, chief, and again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, enjoy it on your family. And guess what? We're adjourned.